Okay. So, hi.
Hello.
Look at that.
So, today I have an agenda for you. Hopefully it won't take that long. I'll be in and out in three. So we'll start with the budget calendar like we normally do every year. Go ahead and get that defined. And we'll have some preliminary revenue estimates for this section. I just did add more and accommodation taxes to keep a high level. Just a quick other thing on the financial model. Potential budget impacts comes into the line. You've heard a lot of those, they yesterday. It's kind of putting this together and then we'll talk about financial policy at days that you all have on each end of the Saturday. Okay, so the budget calendar for next year. We do this every year and I try to keep it as close to the prior year as possible. A lot of these dates are internal. We have today, yesterday. We have our internal dates where department heads get the workbooks, they fill them out, they return them to us. Chris and I discuss them weekly. And each one of the department heads. And then we compile that data and on what I recommend April twenty-sixth, which is a Friday. Our preliminary budget presentation workshop that we do annually. Then we have that discussion with council and present the request from the department heads. Chris's recommended budget. Or excuse me, we take that data from that workshop and we prepare the manager of recommended budget. Two weeks after that, at our May council meeting, we'll have public here on the budget. And then we include this if needed date for a sufficient budget updated workshop. In which if there's changes, the point of time the recommended budget submitted and that date that we have time to prepare the actual final budget for you all. And then the regular meeting in June, twenty-first, Friday, recommend adopting the budget.
I think that April twenty-sixth date, we had discussed that, but if you would take a look at your calendars, I know Emily, you don't be here. But whoa. Narcy will follow up, make sure everybody's top dead. Okay.
So just some preliminary revenue estimates for you all. We'll start with add more taxes. I mean, no further than that. Right now, Brunswick County home values that you all know because rebound last year are high. Right, they have gone up tremendously. This article came out in Star News, I guess a couple of weeks ago now. The ten most expensive homes sold in Brunswick County, of those ten, seven of them are located on Bald Head. So I think you'll recognize some of these homes sold. And combined, they totaled twenty-five billion sales between those seven. Well, I know there's only six pictures. One wasn't pictured. It's a new construct. Just keep that in mind when we're talking property values. There are current village-wide tax rates that you're all aware of. Right now, village-wide, we allocate forty-nine point seven cent. Base tax, do additional investments. The totals, the respective totals are here. And that's per one hundred dollar valuation, as you're aware. Our current village-wide tax revenues, and this is based on values as of the end of January. So all of that forty-nine point seven cent, our current property values, Ivan White, or one point eight four million, or billion, excuse me. Which generate tax revenues of nine to one million for us. And also for the, excuse me, base tax that we allocate at each day, so it was approximately one point four eight million that comes off those properties as well. Gives us about ten point six million base revenues. And then we have an additional two hundred sixty thousand that comes in from MSD Zone A, based on their property values within that zone. And about two hundred thousand from MSD Zone B, based on their property values as well. So. Total. Gives us about eleven billion dollars to work with in our operating budget, general budget. And here you can see the breakdown. So if the properties are not located in NSD zones, you receive approximately four point nine million from those. NSD Zone A, we received four point one seven million, and Zone B is almost two million dollars. And again, there's the breakdown for the base tax rate of wide. And that money is available for general use. Now you'll hear me talk later about restricted funds. You go hurt me, say that. That's where this amount comes into play. This is that money we collect for the beach tax. Beach for nourishment debt, spread at one point nine four one million. Is the same total amount. So we take those amounts. And we use those to compare to what we allocate from debt. So on this nine point one two, nine point one three, next year, we're going to have about eight hundred sixty-three thousand worth debt for this building that we have to pay. Gives us with the remainder in excess of eight point two seven million. From that allocation for beach debt, our repayments about two point four six million. So that leaves us with a deficit from those tax funds, about five hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Where do we get that money from? Well, we pull it from the BRAT fund. We transfer that money out of the BRAT, comes from accommodation taxes. So essentially, we add that back in, and this is our money that. Yeah, so. So trying to project what next year's tax revenue will be, we have to look at property values, growth rates, take all of that into account. So through the rebound process last year, we calculated our average growth rate at one point two percent. Conservative estimate on my part, I think it'll be three quarters of that this year, about point nine percent. Which gives us an additional sixteen and a half million of property values added to that tax base. So we go through the calculations again. Using that property base, gives us about eleven point one, eleven point two million. And again, this is just the breakdown of how those amounts go amongst that allocation for beach debt, available for general use. And we take those amounts again. Doing the same math, see both of these numbers changed. This one went up, this one went. Less amount coming out of the BRAT fund, we fund that, and it gives us eight point four million for operating. Which is an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars for the revenues, based on the estimate. And. This slide I was asked to include, Chris, did you want to say a few words about Brunswick County?
Yeah, just to recognize that some months ago, the mayor had asked, asked me to, for us to take a look at. Sort of what the taxes that the village pays to Brunswick County in revenue. And as we assess what we get in return. In turn for services from the county, recognizing that what we do get primarily the largest piece is. EMS funds to supplement our public safety and the paramedic program. When we do a transport and we meet the Brunswick County paramedics at Deep Point to hand off the patient. So if you want to pull up, we did this mayor for five years.
We walk through it?
Yeah, go ahead and walk through it, Zach.
So here, just to do a basically a financial analysis of how tax dollar, or the amount of tax dollars that goes to the county from. Bald Head Island property owners, we took the net property valuations. For each of the respective years for FY twenty through FY twenty-four. Took the county's tax rate for those respective years, and we calculated out the net levy. And from there, we subtracted out the PHI Public Safety funding. Which left us with the remaining levy that the county uses to allocate. Or they choose to. As you can see here, with the total column being the total levy, this amount may say, see that. Just a few caveat here, we requested three hundred twenty-five thousand here. Got two ninety-eight and a half, and then these numbers here are based on the estimates we just talked. As far as property values go, estimating that out. Hey, I included the two ninety-eight and a half again, because that seemed to be true. Pulled this from the county's budget. This is how they allocate, distribute their tax dollar amongst their various functions and departments. As you can see here, public safety, it's about twenty-two cent for every tax dollar that's paid to the county, countywide, not just Bald Head. But using that and allocating it to the numbers I just showed you, with the tax revenue. We can calculate, it's about one point four million for Bald Head that goes to public safety for the county. So of that allocation, that means two hundred ninety-eight and a half thousand come back to the village to help with public safety. And about one point one million stays with the county. So when you look at that as far as, you know, what does that look like for the piece of the pie, right? Our tax dollars from here going to the county, about twenty-two percent. Public safety, and of even higher, about five percent that comes back to the village of that total tax application. So questions?
Yeah, so to follow up with that, now this is just initial high-level analysis of. Because it has been a question here recently of a number of island residents on. Given, and even though the board of elections process is not handled by the county commissioners. But, yeah, the request to do the polling site being denied is the rationale in elections. In addition to our request, where we asked, had asked for a slight increase on the EMS funding for this fiscal year that between. That that request going from staff up to the commissioner somewhere along the way, someone made the decision not to include it. And so again, the mayor, you asked us to put this together with the idea of possibly pulling together a. A small team to really take, take this as a priority and a objective to, to work on it. Mayor, if you want to add.
Yeah, just so. You know, it's a team. So I had talked to Jerry Maggio, who had worked with us so much with our financial planning. Are you the fairy system? And he is, right now, he's working with Zach and Chris. And we want to really get this narrative down and very clear. I think that, you know, with all the things, things we have going on on the island. This ends up taking a backseat to an awful lot of stuff. And so to take it kind of out of. Out of the, you know, day-to-day and really have a focus on it. So Jerry's looking at that stuff for us, and he's, you know, going to be drawing information from Zach along this line. Try to get our narrative together, and then we'll come back. Chris or Zach or myself will be making a recommendation to the council. How we do this, how we attack.
And so that's between now and budgets.
I mean. It'll be as fast as possible. It's as fast as possible, but it's one of these things that it's just, it's something that needs attention. And so to take it out of. Take it out of the mainstream and really give it the attention that it needs.
Yeah, because there's going to be, there's going to be some, there's going to be a need for the mayor, perhaps some sort of order of you all to. First, I would say meet with the district commissioner that represents this district to lay the case out that, hey. You know, there, this is what the picture is, and, you know, this is also an effort to try to recoup more. To fund the needs that we have on this isolated remote island. That we were paying for services that the county that you're not necessarily getting, right? And we want to make a valid case. We want to be sure that it's, it's. You know, that, that, that we're not asking for too much. We're just, we're asking for what is right and proper. Just to set context that this has been something that's been for years. And previous mayors at one time had looked at this, but probably went at it from a different. Perspective or different avenue of seller's tax redistribution. And trying to change the formula, because right, because that formula for Brunswick County is based on population. So Bald Head Island by census. And what we get compared to Oak Island or Leland. Growing. But that out of nineteen municipalities in Brunswick County, if only three or four of the, but gain from the change of that form of population to add the law. Success value, almost one point eight billion dollars, it would flip that considerably. But the county, obviously, commissioners are not going to change that formula. So this was another way of looking at a potential case and a way to. You know, retain. It's to say, should the county tax rate is what, forty-five and a half cents?
Oh, it was forty-eight and a half, it's thirty-four and a half now.
After revaluation, you know, how much of that could we use to our own rate to supplement all these needs that we need, right?
That's right, Zach. So can I, just a clarifying question. So is, is our thesis that we're paying more than we're getting back? Or is our thesis that we only use public safety dollars at the county level?
Or is it?
Okay.
Far more than we get back.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but. I, I think it would be a bit myopic to suggest that the only thing we get back from the county is a contribution of public safety. Right? That, that would be, I think that would be dead on arrival as far as started the conversation. And that would be a bad side, a bad example of us having blinders to the broader community.
That's part of the analysis where that Jerry is going to be working with Zach and I to try to hone in on. What are some of the other services and what is the value of those that we can place on it to, to. And to answer your question, or to your point, Scott, so that is, we're making a valid case. We're not just coming in like. You know, we only get this and you, you know.
Right, yeah.
We want to be, we want to be practical and realistic in, in, in our expectation and what we, and in our case.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, you know, we've been, all of us have been around for a while now. So if you have insights that, you know, you want to throw into the mix, obviously, this is not, I'm not trying to set up. Somebody working in class of coming up with an answer. This is something that we need to be feeding him information. You know, whatever comes out, it's only as good as information to feed him. So concerns and issues, you know.
No, I think, I think the approach is the right way to go about it is look at their allocation, but I guess, I, I don't know. I don't know, maybe Jerry has some insight into local government or something that knows more about.
Well, I think he's, I think he's relying on us for that part.
Yes, so then you all got to help him with that, right? Because again, I, I think it is, I mean. And the thesis is true. We, we pay in more than we get back, but that would be true probably of every person that pays taxes, right? In some regard, I just wouldn't hate for us to show up in, in a bald head kind of way and say, all we ever get is something for. Public safety, because that, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be accurate either.
Yeah, and I've said this before, as soon as we step off this island, we are.
Yeah.
Part of that community. Part of that community.
We're using those sanitation services. We're using their environment, like we, we are a, a smidgen of it by proportion, right? But we are.
Chris, that's. The two ninety-eight, that's the contract for EMS service, correct? So the county in the last little while has redone their protocols. And so we ask for twenty-seven thousand more dollars. They're changing protocols because we're contracted, but we work under Brunswick County EMS. That's called an additional medicines that are required for those new, those new protocols. So, so we're. Their choices are costing us an additional money that we did not get.
Got you.
Part of that, part of that, obviously, is we're going to get with Josh too to make sure that we've got the latest and greatest on that number.
But going here though, back for this with the rebound, just take note that the remaining levy for twenty. Twenty-four was over half a million dollars.
Yeah.
Keep that in mind. Okay.
And just more thing to point, and I don't know if your point or question was about the timing and our budget, but obviously, this is going to go well beyond. We're not doing this in the hopes that we can.
It's not a change you think this year. That was going to say, that was the goal.
Yeah, it's an issue that's been around for years.
Absolutely.
You know, it'd be great to answer all the questions the next month.
That, well, I don't think.
But I think the fundamental, to me, the fundamental question is what services is Brunswick County providing? To every. Every municipality, every nineteen of the municipalities, excuse me, of the up, or giving to the other eighteen municipalities in Brunswick County. That we're not getting here because we're on a barrier off. That you can only get to by fair.
Right, yeah. That's, that's the right question. That's, that's the right question.
Right, so, and I think it would be instructive to me, the only other entity in North My Lake that has Oprac. Oprac is not a municipality. They are, they are a county community funded by Hyde County.
Hyde County.
Hyde County, so how much money, how much money is Hyde County putting into servicing Oprac? I'd like to know what that figure is relative to what Oprac taxpayers pay Hyde County. As a reference point. To use.
Or not.
Or not. So I think it's going to be helpful.
I think it's.
I'll call significantly.
Yeah, I mean, it, it might be all relative to the point that Hyde County, for the most part, is a very rural distressed valley. But Oprac is the, probably the engine of Hyde County economically wise. So it, yeah, I mean, I think that analysis would be nice to do and see.
Interesting to see.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right, accommodation. So let's look at the previous five years cash collections for accommodation taxes. I realize that this is kind of backwards, but that's how we track it in our system. I didn't want to go rearranging and retract. So FY twenty-three here, FY nineteen, you can see their respective averages by quarter that we collect. So over the last five years, our average is about one point seven million dollars in accommodation tax savings. Significant. So our current year projections, we take those averages that you just saw, plug them in with our current collections. This is as of December thirty-first. And right now, our current budget is one point seven three million for accommodation tax collection. Current collections as of December thirty-first were fifty-three thousand underneath that number for the whole year. We have six months remaining, but that's good. Now, to figure out the average or the, the possible collection amount for the year. We take those last two quarter of the averages, plug them in with our current collections, and we're estimating about two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars above what we budgeted. It's great. Now, taking in our estimated averages, plugging it in with the other five years. Pushes our average up, one point seven six million. That is about fifty-three thousand above that five-year average mark. So you see the trend line going. Right here. So even though this average, or this, this population is lower than what we collected last year and the year before. See that linear trajectory over the last six years. And as we know, this was COVID, right? But I think the thing to take away here is that it's remained relatively flat since then. It's good. So next year's projections. Plugging in the averages. Gives us almost one point nine million for the five years, because we dropped nineteen off, which was the one point one million. And so that's why I made it shoot up. Conservative estimate, just because it is a volatile revenue source as we know. About ninety-five percent is what I would estimate, I think, current five-year average. That gives us about one point seven nine million, which is sixty-four grand above our current budget amount. We continue to see that trend on average. Stay out there. Any questions on that? Sorry.
This is so much better than the way you've been, have been able to present it in the past. I really appreciate it. Oh, thank you for the work you put into this.
I take that from, from in growth.
Yeah, my financial growth. This is really good.
So just to make the point that accommodations tax out there and limitations on how that can be spent.
Yes, ma'am. Those restricted funds, right? Yeah, so that beach re-nourishment debt.
Yep.
And the way we have it structured now, the BRAT fund, so it's beach re-nourishment, recreation, tourism, so everybody's aware. Those are all acceptable uses for those funds. Onto the financial model update. I didn't want to throw everything at you with this, right? Because there is so much with this. And Cindy can attest that it is, it's so involved and it's, it's great. It's going to be a great tool for us. Right now, we have FY twenty-three's audit numbers plugged in, right? So we're at the date. And we have the proposed beach, uh, re-nourishment debt plugged in, also. So we can see all these ratios and these chain balance and what are the potential debt service target will be. Here, not, not to go through all, but just a couple here. So the projection here is the unassigned fund balances percent of expenditures. Which means how much money do you have that is readily available that you can allocate to anything? In your fund balance. And we included the target of sixteen percent, which we'll talk about in a little bit with the fund balance policy. Same thing here with the total fund balance as a percent of expenditures. We have that thirty-two percent target in there. Talk about that in just a second. Next steps with this, so once we receive the department head request, like we talked about earlier. We'll take those figures, plug them directly into the model, take into account growth factors, CPI, et cetera. And then we'll present hopefully a concise presentation, because there is a lot of data here. To you all at the April twenty-sixth workshop. Just some screenshots here from the model. We have an employment benefit salary cost calculator. We can plug in all the different variables. You talked about benefits earlier. Something changes, we can change the percentage. It's great. I think yesterday, Mayor, you asked about the capital improvement plan and the model here. This is where we include those items, plug them in, turn them on for how long we want to carry them out for. It updates the model accordingly. This one. For operating expenses, I know, I know it's, we'll take into, for example, the contingency allocation that we have in current. We can plug that in and, you know, say we wanted to last for ten years or five years, or however long we want that amount to go. And you saw on the prior slide that those fund balance amounts continue to grow, even though we have that in there. So keep that in mind. And this is just the operating expenses for, I think it's the general fund. But you can see, there's a lot of data here, right? It's great. But I'm in there, we know that. So any questions on the model?
Just one thing, and it's obvious, obvious observation. So we do, I mean, we have to plan all of our budget, all of our allocations of funds based on reality. And then every once in a while, we get a Christmas present of millions of dollars from a grant or whatever. And I assume whenever that happens, it's like, plug in. You know, and all the. Training schedules change.
I love plugging in those because it makes those graphs go crazy, right? Make them change, and we can see, okay, well, this four and a half million dollar impact is going to shoot fund balance up because it's taken into account. It's covering this amount, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But yes, so, and, and if there are things that come down the pipeline that the model doesn't take into account, first finally take care of that. It's included in the plan, so they will edit it as needed. It's, it's.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, and let's. Yeah, I I just, you know, and listen to each, you know, public safety. Utilities. It it seems like we have uh a CIP. For everybody now. And, you know, and so that's all incorporated into this model right now.
Those are almost, those requests will be once we get the the actual.
Will be.
Got it.
When we come back, we'll have those plugged in once we go through them with the department heads.
Great.
Map out what we.
Uh can I, uh just a process question. It's more for you, Chris, I think than than. So when you meet with department heads now, like, are. I guess when we when we get back together in April. Are we getting a wish list that we're gonna whittle back from? Or are we getting something that you've already kind of embedded with your department heads of reasonableness? And so. What you're coming with in April is really pretty close to what we need, you know what I'm saying? Like.
Yes.
Because those will be two very different conversations.
Yeah.
And I I think we look to you to kind of be that lens of that first, right? That first pass of, does this make sense? Is that, am I understanding? Okay.
We we have department head meetings and we'll go through it line by line.
You'll say some no's and you'll say some yeses.
So we we. Uh potential budget impacts come down the line here. So. Uh Judy mentioned, I think, or maybe JP did, but you know, there are potential for new positions in departments to help with workloads that's maybe coming on. Those are increases to your operating cost. Yeah, continue to fund those annually that will affect your budget. Uh call it merit adjustments like Judy mentioned, uh any adjustments to those, that's operating expenses, it's gonna affect your budget. Uh inflation rates, mention those too. And I said the wrong number. It's actually three point four percent, not two, my apologies. Uh but obviously, as we know in in years past, with the dramatic rise in inflation, it was definitely. Capital outlay needs. Means JP and Mark, you you all saw us. Four slides full of capital items that that are looking at. Uh but I just want to remind everybody that our current FY twenty four budget. Uh allocations of capital outlay, a hundred and ten thousand for the general fund, four hundred and fifteen for the utility. Uh so contingent on how those requests are presented, proved, denied. That could have an impact. Especially if you go over the numbers, which. Uh debt service changes, you all are aware of these. The bridge loans for the public safety vehicles in that we're taking those loans out so they don't directly. Or harshly impact our operating until our operating funds until we receive the reimbursement for FEMA to carry over one. Uh we'll have the budget for those, just contingent on the timing there. And then obviously potential changes in debt service for the beach reimbursement debt proposed, or that's. And now we'll talk, I'm sorry, any questions? I get ahead of myself. Uh uh financial policy update, so. I don't know if you wanted to touch on these, how they came about, but it was, okay, you um, since I've been here, I'm like. I want a finance policy manual that we can, you know, we can have on hand. Anybody that comes in the door and sits in this chair knows this is how things are done, right? If if I go out on FMLA or something happens, somebody has a guide where they're not having to. Pick exact spring, right? We need that in writing, black and white. And it gives the finance department a foundation to stand on. Right? These are the, these are the guidelines that are set and this is what we operate with it. Uh first up is the fund balance policy. And I put the piggy bank there because when we think of fund balance, that's our savings, right? That's what our, that's what's in the coffers and that's what our savings are. So we have that for you for this afternoon. The objective objectives of this policy, uh to establish minimum uh levels for the village's general fund. Uh enhance the financial position of of village to help bond ratings. Helps plan for contingencies with unforeseen volatility, we talked about that. Generate investment income. Well, I'll talk about this. And then ensure that we have adequate cash flow coming in. Just some highlights from the policy. So it defines the different types of fund balances. Many of you all are aware, non-spendable, restricted. Uh committed, assigned, available, unavailable, et cetera, et cetera. These are the two fund balance minimums that we talked about earlier. These numbers are important because they directly translate over into a monthly amount. So that accessible fund balance, which is a combination of assigned and unassigned fund balances. Think unassigned, talked about that, go to anything, assign is future budget year appropriation. So when we create FY twenty five budget. We assign fund balance to something that's included with that number. So it's taken into account, it reserves it. Uh but accessible fund balance, we're saying that it won't go below two months worth of operating expenditures. And then total overall fund balance, we set that at four months of expenditures, because that's gonna include your restricted reserve, asylum, et cetera. It also defines what you can use that for. And then it also allows for use beyond those limits and direct circumstances. So. It's setting that policy, those guidelines, but if something were to happen where you needed to, it sets a guideline on how you're gonna. Uh rebuild that fund balance if you have to hit it a little bit. Any questions? So the investment policy, I just want you to mind, hold on before we get into this. I may be a bit wild. Uh currently, our investments on fiscal year twenty four as of. January, end of January. Are about thirty, forty thousand less than what we took in for the entire fiscal year in twenty three. So that's approximately, it's almost two cent on the tax rate that we've received in interest. Uh so far in this fiscal year. Now, disclaimer there is that Fed said a couple days ago that they're gonna lower interest rates. And they're gonna do it three to four more times this year. So we're just keeping a close eye on it. But know that that money coming in is helping the taxpayers. And uh thank you to you all. For allowing us to expand our investment options with NC class, NCIP, which is an investment pool. Uh we've used the trust, the capital management trust for, you know, a long time. So we just have those options out there and they are benefiting the village. With that said, the investment policy basically takes what we do and puts it into writing, right? So it's uh complying with all statutes. Uh preserving capital in your portfolio, making sure our portfolios are liquid. Uh. You know, a minimum of market ROI, which means whatever that market is, we get it back. And then we do consider um consideration given to local institutions. But that only caveat there is based on our return. Right? That's what, that's the main goal we want to see with this policy. Uh so it governs all financial assets of the village, um directed, authorized to manage the portfolio. Uh they can only be in LDC approved repositories, that's important. And then the investment earnings allocated at discretion of the finance director, we do that already when we talk about the monthly. Reallocation of those investment earnings. And then the big thing here was others and we even diversify our portfolio. This allows us to do it. And formalizes those internal controls that we have. Any questions? The management policy. So the objective and purposes here, uh just to assure the strong financial health of the village going forward. We have a criteria for issuing and repayment of debt, protecting our financial integrity. That's a common thing with these policies. Uh providing a funding mechanism for capital. And some highlights here, you know, defines the uses that we can use debt financing for. Capital assets only cannot use debt for operations. Uh sets guidelines for debt management, flexible debt structure, so as not to bind our hands too tight. Uh max term life on these uh instruments of forty years. And then obviously take into account the statutory limitations that you all are aware of, of eight percent of property values. It's my credit chart. Debt capacity. And then we can uh debt refund debt based on market, the intrapane markets. Like we uh paid off the Marina Park debt early few years ago, because it made sense. And then the travel policy, I'm sorry, any questions on that? So objectives here are just taking what we do. Tweaking up a little bit to make them better and more beneficial for the village. Uh and, you know, keeping us to those guidelines. So we have procedures for that travel authorization and reimbursement. Create a uniform policy to conform with IRIS regulations for travel. Spilled with efficient operations in our departments. May have some flexibility when village employees and officials are authorized to travel. Some highlights here. We're setting approval responsibilities, so employees, department heads, village manager, you all, et cetera, et cetera. And this is a big one. Um we're going to the GSA travel rates with this policy. Currently, our per DM is forty dollars. Forty dollars a day, eight dollars for breakfast, twelve dollars for lunch, twenty dollars for dinner. Last time I went out to eat in Wilmington, North Carolina, you cannot get an entree for less than twenty dollars. It'll love. So what it does is it sets it based on the location of the trap. So if you're going to Asheville, it's a little bit higher. If you're going to Charlotte, it's this rate. If you're going somewhere that's not listed, it's a set amount based on those uh recommendations from GSA. Allows for the most economical and expeditious form of transportation to be used, private vehicle rental, airfare, think about that. Procedure for requesting the travel and then guidelines for travel advances, which we technically don't offer right now. But as to uh based on the recommendations of our HR director. That may be a, help me, a barrier to some employees from seeking additional training. Because they can't afford those pills, right? Uh but allowing them to have that upfront. Payment will help, because we don't want to hold anybody back from traffic. Uh that's all I got.
Very good.
Thank you. Any questions?
Great presentation.